What they think about an issue, in this case, the budget, so that then you can be guided accordingly if you so wish. But since we adopted our budget several weeks ago before the deadline, the state sets a deadline of mid-April, but the required hearing is like between like 12, 14 days before the vote. So here we are, rehashing what we have already gone through. But we will do it again for folks who may watch this at home, the folks who are here joining us in person. So Tom, I'll let you give a quick story of the... You have it in front of you now. So the same presentation will be up here on the board. So. Your slides.
Very important.
It's not red. Twenty minutes ago. Yeah, when I came in, yeah. There we go. Yay. All right, the 1920 budget season is closing here. So our proposed budget that went out to going to our voters, which is going to be next Tuesday, May 21st, from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. here in the Buckley Middle School cafeteria. So I just want to go over a few things. Joe talked about requirements. This is the requirement, it's right here at your school district budget notice. It's a compilation of a couple things. And we'll go through this real quickly because there's more detail later. I'm not going to give them too much detail. But basically, you have last year's adopted budget of 1819, giving you the details of what was budgeted, how your taxes were created, whether you exceeded the tax cap or not. We were right at the tax cap. And then how it's broken down by the three components. We'll get into that later. And what you have are two other columns. And the one we've got to concentrate on is that middle column. That's our proposed budget for 1920. And we'll go through that in a little bit more detail as we go through this. The contingency budget is if we have a budget failure. It doesn't go through two times. Contingency has a different meaning than it did about eight years ago. A contingency budget now means is going to a contingent budget. In the past, there's a lot of restrictions and everything, but now it's really draconian. It is, you go back to the tax levy you had last year, which in this instance, we would have to reduce our tax, our budget, by over a million dollars, which would be a big feat to do. But we don't even get into that because that's not going to happen.
We're thinking positive.
So I don't want to get into all this detail down here as far as this is all concerned, because we'll go into a little bit more detail as we go through here. This is our three-part budget. And I'll just give a quick overview with some of the highlights. One part of it is the administrative. Tom, before you do that, this is the exact form that we're required by law to provide to our voters. And this is, I think, the second-to-last page of our budget brochure. That's why it's there, and it has to be in this format. Some school districts always send that out, just in a postcard, and that's all you will get. Yep. So some of the highlights just going through here. I won't get into too much. But just look at the first part, administrative budget. There's kind of two things that stand out. One being in finance. In our department, we see about a negative $20,000. And $30,000 of that negative is due to our Envision software, which we purchased this year. So there's an initial year is a big cost. We are now going to be in our second year, even though it's the first year we're using it. So first year is right now. We purchased it, we're getting trained on it moving forward on July 1st. But next year, we're only paying for maintenance and not for the purchase of the program. The other one you see there is, one I want to get into, is supervision handicap. Because of ESO, we really had to look at, and there will be changes as we go along. ESO is a new government report that is replacing NCLB and has a whole different way of looking. Not a whole differently, but just a more finite way of looking at things, breaking it down by building and everything. So we're in the process of breaking things down. But one area that we've never broken down in the past is special education. So we have split special education out in two places, administratively and also program. And that $25,000 basically is we moved two positions into the admin and left one position behind in a program that was in the administration code the year before. So we reduced that. And the person who's working with the students are clearly not in there. So overall, we see a 1.39% increase. Overall, the entire budget is 3.2. So we see an increase, but it's definitely the lowest of the two areas. The second area is the program budget, which is the largest expense we have. And that's for the teaching of our students. And a couple items, just to let you know, overall, this budget is one position less than the previous year due to the lower enrollment of incoming kindergarteners. Our fourth grade sections is going from a current of four down to three. So fourth grade is going to go from four sections to three. So one less elementary teacher due to decreasing enrollment at the elementary. So that's a big thing. A couple other highlights. The administrators are putting more money into textbooks looking forward. So there's more money in textbooks going forward. I think the science standards are now seeing step textbooks now along the line. It took a couple of years for the common core science textbook. I think that was a big part of next year's purchases. Other items also are in-service training. In that, there's an increase of $15,000 in... Actually, it might be in the admin part, to tell you the truth. And that's for in-service training through Margaret Krepp's office. So there's more money in her professional development this year, $15,000. Some other highlights, there's been a whole lot. I mean, there's nothing really big and huge going on. A couple of the things that we did do, we added Naviance to the guidance office for our students, a new program to help track their career aspirations. Also, another place that we saw a little bit of an increase is a computer-assisted instruction. A purchase of a software called JAMF, J-A-M-F, which will help in our maintenance of all our carts. It'll be a lot more efficient in making sure that all machines are updated by cart instead of by individual machines. So we can better use our computer staff, technology staff. In the third part, which is the capital part, which deals with the operation and maintenance of the flattened debt service, we did see the biggest increase of 6.4%. And that is a big part of debt service. There's a couple of things that happened in debt service this year. Some good and some are somewhat bad, but in terms of... We had an energy performance contract come off after 17 years. We completed one, got one coming up in a couple more years. But we had one of 17 years come off and it was about $130,000. And we also had to, in Sheldon's part of the program, in the capital part, which actually it's under maintenance, I see a negative there, is because that had come off contract. We had also a contract on top of it which provided services. We are now going to individual contract with the company, which is at a lower price. So that's why we're seeing a negative there. But we're seeing an increase in debt service. And I just talked about we're reducing our debt service by eliminating our energy performance contract when we had the $250,000 cap for our current project that's going on. We're doing a three-year ramp-up. This is our second of three years. Instead of doing a one-year hit of next year of a very large amount, we're doing incremental steps. It will also help us reduce the principal on our debt service, too. So we won't have to go out and borrow as much. Overall, 3.2%. So. This is just broken down just by margin grouping. As we look here, this is just a look at last year compared to this year. And we can see the administrative component has gone down from 13.13 to 12.9. We also see a slight decrease in the program, 73.42 to 73.24. Little drop, even though there's more money into it because the big part of it comes in capital. Went from 13.45 to 13.86. And that due to the debt service that we've added, too. There's one ratio here I want to see is the administrative ratio at the bottom there. It was at 15.17. This looks at administration and program and looks at that ratio. And it decreased by 0.2% over here. And it just gives you an idea of what is in each of those three components. And take a look at the tax levy limit. Won't go into this, but basically, we had great growth in this school district of 0.89%. That's great. This district has been growing since the tax cap has been going on. Here, some school districts have been very low numbers. But we've actually been pretty good, averaging about 0.6% since the tax cap has come in. And of course, the allowable tax growth was a lesser 2% of the CPI. CPI this year was 2.44%, but it's capped at 2. All right? Just as if it's a negative, it's capped at 0. It happened to us a few years ago. We actually had a negative CPI. But as we go on, and I won't get too much into this, but we've gone through it in other sessions. But we were able to increase our tax levy by 3.64% or a little over $1,500,000. So that was a pretty decent tax levy that we could use. So I want to get back a little bit onto the revenue. I'm not going to get too much into it. But I do want to bring up a couple of things in the revenue side. We added money to interest and earnings. Interest and earnings are up, so that was good. We added $70,000 to the revenue side. We added $50,000 for non-resident tuition for students. Our building, our state aid went up by a little over $24,000. A whole lot. But remember, we had a building aid come off, so that automatically decreased us, okay? So also, our BOCs aid is down a little bit because we didn't use BOCs as much this year. But overall, it was about 0.65%, a little over $24,000. One of the biggest things with this is the appropriate fund balance is something we've been doing over the past few years by reducing our reliability on our fund balance. At one point, we're almost at $1.2 million of using fund balance every year. We reduced it by $100,000 for three straight years. We're now down to $850,000. And hopefully, we should level out here pretty soon. So we won't need to do that. As we take a look real quickly at the tax impact. Now, remember, when I'm looking at this tax impact, this is using last year's 1819's full tax information. This does not, I don't know what next year's is. Equalization rates can change, assessments can change. When do we know what next year's is? Usually, it's about August 1st. It's about August 1st. You still have to get through grievance day. Because even if I got the numbers now, they're kind of, they change. They change. Not drastically, but you don't want to put anything out there that really isn't factual, because then people would expect it. So if we really look at, everything being the same, we're looking at a 3.6, 3% increase. Remember, on the tax cap, we could go to 3.64. We're actually $2,811 under the tax levy cap. It's the first time since the first year that we've done that. So getting back to the budget notice, and you'll see that a lot of these numbers, if you compare it, you'll see that all that is there. So all that in-between and for measure, this is the budget notice. Once again, just for you to look at again. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the budget notice or anything that I've asked so far this year? For this section. If not, move to the next part here.
Tom, I do have one quick question on the contingency budget, which of course is not going to be relevant, so I'm sure the budget will pass. Why is the contingent budget $38,000 more than last year's budget? I thought you had...
I have to reduce it by the tax levy. So our tax levy went up, I think it was $1,500,000 about.
Right.
So I have to reduce the budget by $50,000.
Okay, I guess I'm just not understanding why contingent lines don't mirror the 1819 lines.
Because we changed it to the tax levy. There's a lot of other revenues in there. We got a little bit more state aid, but we did less fund balance. We added more for interest. That all plays into that number there. So it's really just reduced by what the tax levy increase was in this year. Because we can't increase the tax levy. You can increase your budget as much as you want. You can increase the budget $2 million more if you want to. I just can't increase the tax levy any more than it currently is.
So does that mean $38,000 is the only increase we got?
Correct, correct, correct. You don't want to be in that position. I can tell you that right now.
That's sad.
It would be, it would be. It would be very difficult for a school district. Go for it. And I feel sorry for most school districts that do go for it. There's not a whole lot of them, but there are some places in the state where it is, there's some issues. Where I want to go is there are two propositions that are going to be on the ballot. And those two propositions, the school budget for 1920 of $35,5961. And then there is a second proposition, and that is to elect three board members to three open spots for three-year terms. And the three this year, in order in which they were selected, are Steve Jenkins, Matthew Van Ormer, and Jaclyn Perkuya.
Tom, just to clarify, something I wanted to clear last time. So Lisa's term has expired now. So we know in the HELOCs who takes over right away.
Well, I have mine, but I'd rather leave it to the people who have been in contact with our attorneys. But I know it from last time. Yeah, so the way it works, this is by state law, is that in that particular situation, because Lisa is not filling out... She's not at the end of a regular three-year term. She was just a one-year... She did us a favor by taking that position for the year. But actually, according to the law, she takes that position until the next vote, which is May 21st. So the way it works out is that the people who are running, who are not already on the board... So that takes Steve Jenkins out because his term runs till the end of June. The two people who are running, who are not currently board members, the individual who has the highest number of votes steps in to fill... Remember, that position was vacated by Deirdre Dalbert last end of June. So that individual takes over for Lisa in Deirdre Dalbert's remainder of her term through the end of this school year. And then the new school year starts a new three-year term for that individual.
I'm assuming the two have been done finally?
Yes, they have. Just one last question. Excuse me, the same exact thing happened two years prior to that when Rick Walker resigned his position towards the end of his term. And when Jaclyn, I think Jaclyn was the highest vote-getter of that, at that particular election of non-sitting board members. So she was sworn in that next board meeting. Was it the night of the board vote? Do you remember? I don't remember.
I was in the board.
Yes, you weren't in that position. That's right.
I think it was that, right?
I think, yeah, it was that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So maybe we want to let our candidates know that they should come to the budget board with money.
All right.
There's something out there. He has priority.
Okay.
Actually, no, I believe I was sworn in the next...
At the next.
The next regular meeting.
At the very beginning of the next year. Okay.
On the last slide, I just want to give a little budget history. And we have about, probably 25 years of some history here about, you know, where we've been in the last... How many years was it in that? I guess it's eight years now in the tax cap era. You have shaded in yellow there. If you can very much see that our budgets have very much been reduced, usually typically in the 2% to 3% range on average. Our tax levy probably much around a little bit higher than our budget to budget increase. And that's typically due to state aid and other revenues not keeping pace with our budget. We're not getting 3% increases on our state aid or anything of that nature. And when we do get that 3% state aid increase, and we will get one in about a year from now, and that's because of a building aid. It's helping us to pay off the debt. So it's not like it's to support program. It's to support the debt we incurred. You look at the, in the middle, after the tax levy and then to the right of that, at 16.213, that's an estimate. And that is our tax rate. And you can see some wild numbers in there. You can see negative 13%. And then you see a 12% increase. This is almost always corresponding to the column to the right. And that's the assessed value of this town. From about 15 years ago, this town was valued a little over $1.1 billion. It's now valued at $1.8 billion. And it will probably go up over the next two years. I wouldn't be surprised to see that over $2 billion in the next... Maybe even this year or the year after. We might see that at about $2 billion. So you can see that tax rate per thousand is not a great indicator of what's going on because your assessments do change. I just got my assessment in mind. Mine just went up 33%. So I'm looking at grievance day, so maybe you can take some time off for that.
Feel free.
They adjusted every year, but this year is like, whoa, what happened? So. Well, it's interesting, if you look at that yellow, the yellow shaded box, and that's the tax cap box, right? The years before that, nobody was even talking about the tax levy. It was all, the conversation was all about the budget. And back in those days, it was kind of the standard wisdom, in this school district anyway, that if you could keep your budget around 5%, there's a reasonable, reasonably good chance that it would pass. No one was even looking at the tax levy. With the tax levy cap legislation, nobody seems to care anymore what your budget increase is. It's what the tax levy increase is because that's what drives everything nowadays. So you can, and it's pretty dramatic if you look at the differences between the shaded box and what was above the shaded box. The other thing, if you look at the far-right-hand column, look at the percentage of voter approval. And that changed pretty radically once the tax levy cap came in. And, I mean, it's not a great mystery why that happened, but that certainly did have the desired effect. Unfortunately, one of the pieces of data that Tom doesn't have on this is the voter turnout. And that has dropped like a rock. I think many people, and it's not just in our school district, assume that because of tax levy cap, that it's just going to pass so people who voted in years past don't turn out. And it's still passing by pretty good percentages, but the numbers of people who are actually turning out is decreasing drastically. Just one thing, just look at, if you look at that line between the yellow and the white, if you look at the three years prior, you see it was at 3, 4, 3, 2.1, and 2.61, budget-to-budget increases. We were making a very concerted effort in the finance committee at that time. That was the start of the Great Depression, or Great Depression, Great Recession. And the board really did work those three years before the tax cap came in to keep it low as it could. Now, they were 5% and 4% tax increases, but we were really putting a break to the budget at that time because of the economic times at that time. So we started to impose that upon ourselves. If we knew the tax cap was coming, we probably wouldn't have done that to build up a little bit of a war chest. Hey, Tom, if you go back to that far-right-hand column, can you explain why the voter approval went from 75% to 73% to 79% to 76% to 81%, then down to 61%? 61% was when we did an override. We overrode the tax cap that year. And I don't remember the specific numbers. But we needed to get a 60% yes vote to be able to enact that budget that year, or else we would have had to go back out to it. So I remember at the time, there was a lot of talk here around this board. And I actually have to admit, I wasn't for that. But I'm so grateful that it did happen because I really wasn't sure if the community was going to support that. It supported it by three votes.
Six.
Six? Well, we said if three had changed their mind, then we would have lost. So it would have taken three people to change their mind. And that's why I say three in that respect.
It's way more known.
But I am very grateful that the community did that because it's really helped us out as we go forward. Yeah, it's helped us get off our controllers list. Not all by itself. A lot of it's been good money management on the part of you and your team. But that was really, that really turned the tide to help us get off the fiscal stress list. Any questions?
No questions, but Tom, thank you for all the work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
And these are posted in the district offices for any voters that want to see them?
Yeah, there is, it's a bigger one. Tomorrow, these are being mailed out, right, wouldn't it, tomorrow? They've already got them. Was there anyone today? You got yours, Stan?
I got mine.
Oh, good. Oh, great, I wasn't sure. I haven't been in... Don't hold your breath. Normal eye.
Anyone in Meyer who would like to see it?
But there's a larger book that is located in the town halls, the library, and in the main offices of each of the school buildings, which gives you a lot more detail, a lot more breakdown of what you'll get in this. But this one here has a lot of information that this one doesn't, too. There's a lot about the candidates and some other information here that is not in here either, so. They had these out on the table at the art show on Friday night. They, I assume we gave them like a half dozen copies of it, and they had them out on the table. I'm not saying anybody took them or not. I wasn't monitoring that. But they did have them at a very conspicuous place for anybody who was interested, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. So we can move on to our regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 23rd, 2019 regular meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? We had an amendment, a change about passing a motion after executive session that was added. So with the amendment, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 30th, 2019 special meeting work session?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment? Anyone from the public that'd like to comment? Well, I'm sorry she's not here, but I would like publicly to thank Lisa for stepping up for the second time. She's actually filled shoes twice. She's been elected once and filled shoes twice. So I think all in, she's been six years. And we really appreciate her being available to us when we needed her. We can move on to board committee reports. We've got personnel first up.
That's me. So we, and personnel, we discussed the idea of a Medigap plan for retirees. Tom had done some research into this. Basically, Medigap plan is a supplemental plan for retirees... Basically, Medigap plan is a supplemental plan for retirees here that those over sixty-five and older. It can be a significant savings for the district, and it can include things like dental and vision that some of our retirees currently don't have. So it's something we definitely continue to look into. It looks like it can be implemented both for the district and retirees. So we're gonna look into that more. This'll be something that has to be associated with the next contract unless we offer it on a volunteer basis, so that could be the way that would go. Then the rest of the meeting, we talked about the policy nine four one zero, subplacing all the salary schedule. We worked through some details of that, and it's gonna move on to policy. Joe has to get some more information that goes into that policy.
Any questions for personnel? On to policy.
She's me. And guess what we talked about in the policy, these places on the salary schedule. We talked about that briefly, we went over it, we took a lot of time for that because then we had the pleasure of being joined by members of the high school newspaper and advisor. We talked with them for well over an hour, it was a great discussion. We talked about policy five two two zero, which is student publications. They told us about their visions for the school newspaper, where they wanted to go with it, what things they thought were not in policy that could help them. We talked about use of social media, advertisements, mail subscriptions, censorship. We talked, everything newspaper we talked about, I think, uncovered. They talked about a little bit of frustration with all the levels of review of an article that has to go through before it can get to the newspaper. We talked about, I don't know, what else did we talk about?
Talked about updating our policy to reflect social, social media.
Yes, yes.
Which is something that's not even mentioned in our current policy.
Right, it's not mentioned at all. They are going to, we did ask them if they would go through the policy and put, and give us suggestions on what they would add, and the committee would take that up. We talked about censorship, we talked about the nature of school newspapers, that, you know, articles are based in student opinions, not really factual situations and how difficult that can be. So it was, it was really a great discussion, and we look forward to getting their, their input back in the policy, and the committee will take up anything that we feel needs to be added to the policy. But, you know, we're thinking about the future of the paper, not just the here and now, you know, those seniors and juniors there, just wherever we go, and, you know, it was a great discussion, so we love having them.
Yeah, it's fun.
Other questions? I have some on this topic. Did they explain sort of some of the things that they're hoping to accomplish using social media or?
You know, they think they want to do like teasers, you know, for articles, to be able to put some out. You know, they would like to have control over the social media, the students, and, you know, just send out a teaser or maybe a survey. We talked about feedback and how that could go a new way, you know, if you open that up to comments, you may not get always the comments you want. So we did talk a little bit about that, but, you know, they really, that's just where things are going, and they, you know, they want to be current and, pretty much is that.
Well, I really appreciate you guys inviting them to come because it was quite clear in the newspaper that was printed that they were asking for support. I'm really grateful that you guys invited them to join. Now, any other questions or comments for policy? Okay, moving on to facilities.
Okay, it's me. So we got an update on the Capitol project. As of that time, as of when we met, April twenty-fifth, six of the eight bids have been awarded. The two that weren't were the roof and the site work, and the roof was being rebid by breaking it and doing two separate bids because the parts, the work that needed to be done were really two different types of specializations and would likely lend to two different companies applying for it. And the expected timeframe is that the new roofing bids will be due in mid-May, ready for a board vote in May twenty-eighth. Is that still?
Their bids are in for this Friday.
Great.
So they expect that we will award them at the next board meeting.
Excellent.
For the roofing.
For the roofing.
Not the site work.
Right, and rebidding for the site work would happen a little bit later. And we talked about the complications of timing and phasing for the whole project, overlapping stuff mainly having to do with power issues. And that work has started. Contractors have been in for window measurements, plumbers have started supply lines in the basement to be used for irrigation system, Lime Energy started lighting, so, and plumbing and lighting work will continue during second shifts. On holidays, the schools are closed. Summer work in CLS will be kitchen, skylights, and access ladders, and for BMS, RHS, asbestos abatement, floors, ceiling, windows in the one forty wing, and bathrooms, and probably root work. And then we had a really interesting conversation about fire and emergency drills, and Sheldon was sharing with the committee his techniques for surprising people and testing his staff and kind of quizzing, like, do you know where the fire poles are? And it was a very enlightening conversation and surprising, and I can personally say I was pleased to hear how proactive it sounds like he is with that. And he's found that sometimes teachers and students don't know what they should do if a fire started in their classroom, and that he wants to create a color system for coding for the building zones and clarify zone descriptions to simplify communications between the fire department and our staff. Arlington High School had created a video for students to help them understand the reasons for why we do different things during the lockdown, and Sheldon showed that video during safety meeting and considering doing that here. So at Davenport, we'll ask the video club about creating something similar. And we talked about adding, Lisa suggested we add to the beginning of the year orientation process by asking teachers and other staff if they know where fire alarm poles are and how to use them, and that we might, Tom suggested we might get somebody from Utica National to come do trainings on conference days. Our next meeting is Thursday, May twenty-third.
Any questions for facilities?
How about that softball, Phil?
No need for irrigation.
We're gonna give each one of you a sponge, send you out there later.
All right, moving on to long-term planning.
Close of mine. So we talked about that Roman projection that we discussed last time of, you know, that three-section grade, once it moves into BMS in the high school, what would that look like if we didn't do anything different than what we're doing today? The one caveat is that we know students are added and subtracted along their journey, so projecting is really kind of a best guess. And the current fourth grade has ninety-one kids, which is kind of a bit of a bubble, so there's a lot of different things that we need to look at when we're doing that. And we moved on to the summer administration, administrative workshop where they'll start looking at some alternatives to structuring, restructuring some of the school, looking at physical space, guidance, staffing, that type of thing. Lloyd Niega will again hopefully help us facilitate that workshop over the summer, sometime in August. He'll have a report done by September and a recommendation to the board by December.
Questions for? Do we need another next meeting?
Well, we're gonna decide based on the CAC recommendation that what the board felt we should move forward on. We would meet once that happens. We haven't had that.
They wanted to do everything except?
Well, yeah.
All right, finance is next.
Finance is me. So at our finance committee meeting, we talked about the budget brochure, and it's a comprehensive document, as Tom was mentioning, that's a summary of all of the school budget, including the three parts of administration, program, and capital components, superintendent salary disclosure, and pupil achievement data. The budget brochure is going to be available in the public libraries at the Star and Reinkliff, the Town Hall, Village Hall, and in the administrative offices of each school. And Tom is also looking to perhaps put it on our website, at least some of the information. We also talked about InVision. The training is in process, as Tom mentioned previously, and the, it's going well, and it should be up and running by July first while also going parallel with our current payroll system, Informatic. And then we also talked about the Bosse's computer lease update. All leases are moving ahead as planned, but unfortunately, we are not qualifying for the E-rate refund because that is for equipment, not services, and the lease is considered a service. So Tom is reviewing options for how to receive refunds by other means. Our next meeting is June sixth.
Questions for finance? Tom, what have we done in the past for leases and getting reimbursement?
Now, this, this is a little bit different. These, the four project that we sent to Bosse's, three of them were E-ratable, meaning we could get E-rate from them. And here's the big difference. In E-rate, it's in our name, Reinkliff Central School District. Anything that comes out of Duchess because of the Duchess purchase orders, it may be Duchess Bosse's. You can't do it for E-rate. So we're tearing some things apart. So we're gonna reduce the amount of that particular lease that's still being worked out right now with our E-rate people we work with, it's called E-rate Central, to figure out exactly how much we can get E-rated. We've made some moves in the budget to deal with this, so it's all taken care of as far as that's concerned. And the other big one is through the dark fiber, which has nothing to do with E-rate whatsoever. That's through the school box, smartphone. So there'll be a little bit more to come on that. Nothing was pressing. So actually Bosse's was checking some things because they were running some things through SED too, to see if some things could happen.
And this wasn't the lease that we already approved, is it?
No, this was the one from a couple weeks ago.
It was?
Yeah, yeah. It hasn't gone through all its wanderings through Bosse's.
We haven't borrowed the money for it.
Yeah, nothing's been borrowed yet, no, no.
We're trying to maximize the aid and reduce the cost, so we'll be, we'll be, we'll be in good shape.
Okay, good. Any other questions for finance? Okay, communications.
That's me again. We covered a lot of ground, so sorry, these are long. We talked about budget-related publications, the newsletter that was holding up before, the purple one, and, and the newly created budget one oh one documents will go live on the district, did it go live?
Yeah, it's been up for a week.
On the district website.
Yeah.
Which is great, thanks to Steve and the other people who were involved in that, if there were more people in his office.
Well, Stephen and Tom.
Stephen and Tom, yeah. And, and then we also talked about what Liz called the budget brochure, and I think of it as more of a budget book.
The budget phone book.
Phone book, right. But that's already been covered here. And, and then moving on, we talked about creating, we're making gradual progress on a tri-fold promotional pamphlet for the district, and so we worked through some ideas for that. And live streaming sports, Joe reported the district is close to signing a contract with NFHS, the company that provides live streaming for video coverage of our sporting events and other non-copyrighted public events like graduation. They offered to provide us with two automated and unmanned camera systems worth five thousand dollars for free in exchange for their keeping full subscription incomes for the first three years of the five-year contract. They would provide equipment installation and maintenance on one indoor and one outdoor camera system. We could still use other video recording devices to capture events and locations that are out of reach of the eyes of those cameras. We would not have to reach a subscription quota, and Joe anticipates that the value of the camera systems will exceed the subscription income, so this looks like a good deal for us. It's really exciting to get these like really cool-looking cameras, like they move on their own.
Well, it's what they, it's what they do that's cool, zooming and tracking action up and down the field or the court.
Yeah, right, the actual thing doesn't look that bad.
If I, if I can, Jack, I'm just, you notice on your revised agenda tonight, I have put that on your, on your agenda if, if the board should feel disposed to, to act on that this evening. They're pushing very hard to get the school districts who want to take advantage of this to commit before the end of May because they need time to get the stuff shipped, and they do a site visit to check out where you want to put it, and then, you know, to give us some technical advice as to location and whatnot. With, the goal is that we'll be up and running with these cameras before fall sports starts. So if they don't start in June, then we'll miss that window and we'll be coming in, you know, a little late to their game, so to speak. So that's, that's, that's the goal. And I have had our legal counsel review that. They made a few relatively minor suggestions in terms of the contract language. They've made the contract language changes, so, I mean, we're ready to go as soon as you guys give me the, give me the thumbs up. Anyway, that's just to piggyback on.
Just a couple, two questions.
Yeah, sure.
So, one, do we know which field it would go on the outdoor one? I mean, obviously, it's not just the softball fields.
And why not? They are waterproof. Just kidding. I'm really not sure where they're gonna go. That's why they will, they will come out. We won't be able to cover all of those fields with the one unit. I mean, just too far. And obviously, if we were a school that had fields on multiple campuses, you'd need multiple cameras, obviously. So they'll, they'll tell us what they think the best physical setup is for the cameras, so we'll, we won't reserve judgment until they come out and say, we think it really would work best here or there. So that, that.
And then the other question is, what after the three years and what happens?
Well, what happens after the three years is that the contract reverts to where we would be if we decided to pay for these units out of pocket now, which is a revenue sharing. They sell subscriptions to, to real-time viewing, and they've got a whole menu. It's like nine dollars and change for a monthly subscription, and you can buy a season subscription or you can buy a full-year subscription. I mean, I can't quote all the prices, but either in year one, if we were to buy the cameras ourselves, we're looking to get them free in exchange for giving the entire piece of the pie to this company, or after three years, under this arrangement, then we start getting a cut of the subscription. And don't quote me, but I think it's like seventy-five, twenty-five. It's not gonna be a huge cash cow for us, but it may generate some revenue that would be worth having, and some revenue is better than no revenue. But they get it for giving us the cameras without a cost upfront, they keep all the revenue for the first three years, and then after year three, then we start to get our cut of, of the revenue. And we think on balance, it's gonna be, at worst, a break even, and at best, we may actually make out on this deal, so.
And if the camera gets taken out by a fly ball, they come and replace it, repair it at no cost, huh?
Yeah.
So the last, yeah, the last topic, no, that's all right. Timely, relevant. The last topic that we talked about was, last year, the committee proposed that BMS and RHS adopt and modify the Tell Us About Your Student Form that's been used in CLS for a while, just before the beginning of each school year. And offering this form to parents of middle and high school students would advance our student social and emotional wellness goal. Unfortunately, the idea came up too late last year to be used, but Joe was going to bring it up at the next administrator's meeting to see if it could be implemented this August.
Which we discussed Saturday. So we're working on it.
Okay, great, great. And our next meeting was scheduled for June thirteenth, we've moved it to June twelfth.
Any questions for communications?
So that form is gonna be updated, just to make sure it's very user-friendly for parents. I remember a chance or some parents found the form tough to answer all the questions, maybe.
The discussion today was really more about how a similar form might be able to be adapted to use at the secondary level as opposed to reworking the elementary school form. form. That really didn't come up as, as a discussion either at our meeting or at our administrative meeting today. But we did talk about the concept and asked John and Ed to give some thought and have some discussions as to how something similar could work, might work at their building. So that's the start of the discussion. Clearly, I gave out copies of the Chancellor form to everybody, so clearly, it's written with an elementary school focus, which is, which makes sense. So we know we'd have to modify that if it were going to be used at the middle school level and/or the high school level. So they've got to do some thinking on that. And they will, we'll keep it posted.
In my memory of that form at Chancellor, it's a carbon form?
I don't remember.
Yeah. I think. Is there any possibility that a digital, you know, writable PDF could be made available to parents rather than more paper? You know, I remember always doing a Word document and just attaching it to the form because there was no way I was going to get all of the things I needed to say on the carbon.
I mean, certainly can look into that, and I don't see any reason not to.
We have the technology.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
To create archival files.
Yeah, so we'll look into that for Chancellor, because they will continue to use that regardless of what the building principles of the middle school and the high school decide to do or not do, or to adapt it this way or that way, the other way. The elementary school will continue. They find it very, very useful. So we'll see if we can digitize that and use technology to collect that.
This generation of parents would appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm sure you're right, Jo. Yeah, great idea, thank you for sharing that.
Steve?
Can I go back to personnel? I know we're not meeting on the 16th. Do we settle on a new day? I don't remember the last email thread.
No.
I haven't got a time from Susan, if you want to meet with Susan.
That's right. She wasn't available.
I'm trying to arrange for that.
On the 21st.
Well, I, she's really busy at this time of the year, it's open enrollment, so she's kind of all over the place for the next few weeks. So I'm going to see her tomorrow and try to see if we can knock down, give me a couple days.
Okay. We're going to move on to draft summer 2019 board meetings.
Okay, so at the risk of appearing to be getting ahead of myself, and this, of course, doesn't apply to everybody around this table, but this is the place to raise it. Whitney mocked up a schedule of meetings for 2019-2020 school year. We'll obviously get input from our new board members after next week's, next week vote, next week's vote. Most immediacy is the summer schedule, mainly because that's where we tend to understandably find the most conflicts that people have due to vacations and taking kids to college and whatnot. So we thought it would be a good idea to put this out there now, focus on the two summer months. We'll get input from you, those of you who are going to be sitting on the board this coming year, as well as our new board members, and we'll work something out. The other thing I would mention, which I hasten to do every year, is that just because there are four summer meeting dates on this draft calendar, doesn't mean we have to meet four times. There have been some years when we've only met three times, either because people's schedules didn't allow four meetings, or we just want to give ourselves a break and a breather. So that's totally up to you as board members. The only one that's got to happen is that organization meeting on July 9th. I put it on July 9th, and I think it has to be done somewhere between July 1st and July 15th. It has to occur during the first two weeks of July. And looking at the calendar, it didn't look like that week where July 4th is in was an especially good week for that. But if that's when you guys want to meet, that's okay by me. I'm not looking, because you're the board president, force of habit. But anyway, for those of you who are going to be on the board, you know, check your schedules out. It seemed to me like July 9th was the better of the two, but let me, let me know what your schedules are, and we'll work around them. And there's also, while we, I think we tried pretty, pretty hard to schedule meetings when everybody can make it, there are times when everybody can't make it. So we at least need a quorum of four, and we prefer to have five or six, or preferably seven. So it's, it's up to those of you who are going to be on the board this coming year to let me know within the next, you know, week or two, what your summer schedule looks like relative to these, to these dates. Then we'll, we'll juggle as we do every summer.
So do you want that information now, or do you want us to email?
You can email, and it would probably make more sense, so we don't have to kick dates around right now. So yes, I mean, it's fine.
And in the past, in my memory, we've also come off a Tuesday if we didn't, if we had too many conflicts of schedule, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday, it could be.
Well, we've done that, I think, more so if we wanted to have like a board workshop or whatever. I think for regular business, we've tried to stay with Tuesdays, yeah. Just because we tell our public that we meet the second and fourth Tuesdays, so it's kind of, we try to stay with Tuesdays for regular board meetings to do the board business.
Yeah, that, it would be helpful if you guys would let Jo know, because there's always the goal workshop that we try to get going in the summer too, and those things usually happen in August when everybody's away on the beach, so.
Yeah, it's, traditionally, it's pretty hard to schedule.
Yeah.
Just the way it is. All right. So give me your feedback, and we'll work around it. Thank you.
All right. So, let's move on to good news. Anybody have any good news?
So I just wanted to let the board know, I was talking to my sister-in-law who lives in North Carolina over the weekend, and she, of course, attended Ryback Schools, as my brother and I did. And she was telling me that she attended the 100th birthday party for one of our retired teachers, Mr. Choffey, who
Yeah.
Actually retired while I was in high school, about, which is about 40 years ago now, so, but he still lives at home alone, and, you know.
What did he teach for?
Chemistry. He was before Dan O'Leary, so.
That's amazing.
Cool.
Very cool, very, very cool.
Oh, I'd like to give a shout out to Andrew Holosoppel?
Holosoppel.
Holosoppel, for being the salatorian.
Salatorian.
Thank you for 2019. I thought, you know, good on him, and it reflects well on us, and good hard work.
So I have to share on that particular topic that usually when I post something on the district's Facebook page or Twitter account, more specifically, Facebook page, if it's, if it's a popular post, I usually get two or 300 people, you know, hit that post, maybe four if it's really, for whatever reason, a popular thing. And I checked this morning, and that post with Andrew Holosoppel had 2,200 hits.
Wow.
I was flabbergasted, but in a good way.
Family, friends and family.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever. So thank you for mentioning that. And I know, I know Andrew through different, different activities, not school, and he's probably embarrassed as, as all he can get out. But he deserves the recognition, because that's quite a, it's quite an accomplishment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, and also, we should thank Michelle, or the trombone, Michelle?
No, we're going to get to that when we do the consent agenda.
We want to get the trombone first before we do Barry first.
I just want to say that the middle school chorus and band concert happened between last meeting and this one, and it was wonderful. Great job, so happy with our music programs.
On that same note, no pun intended. The K-12 art show at Star Library was, was really outstanding. It's a great space to display our kids' work. They love the fact that we're there, brings a lot of people into the library, and I was, I was able to attend the reception this past Friday. It's still going until May 30th, so if you haven't seen the work there, you ought to stop in and treat yourselves. That's well done, works great, and the teachers do an amazing job with our kids, K through 12s.
No, Jo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Stole your thunder.
Sorry.
Not my thunder. Well, and, and I would also like to point out that in our For Your Information part of our packet, Duchess has decided to waive the tuition for concurrent classes. That's really great.
That's great.
That's really wonderful. I'm sure our guidance counselors will be happy to share that information with those kids.
I'm sure they will, yeah. It's good to hear.
All right. Any other good news? Old business? No? All right.
For some reason, I'm thinking I did, but I can't remember, so shame on me.
Still the old guy.
Thank you for reminding me.
Exactly. We have another opportunity for public comment? Anyone? No? All right. Any other?
Just one.
Please.
This is my last meeting as a member of this board. I will be with you all in the, the annual meeting next week, but I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve again. I'm very happy to have done it. I think you're all fabulous, and I wish you, those of you who are staying on, much success moving forward. Thank you.
Sorry I'm a little late. You had a public comment shout-out. Thanks.
Go watch the video.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
You don't have to watch the video. Thank you for always being, stepping up.
Bailing us out, thanks.
So many guys, I miss you. Mark, you have another?
Yes, I just want to remind everybody about the annual meeting of the Duchess County School Board Association, which is going to be on June 20th at Arlington High School. I think it's 6 o'clock. So there'll be a dinner and a guest speaker, and it's free, so it's also open to all board members and all new board members, so put it on your calendar.
If I could just follow up on that, there's an item in, under FYI in your packets. NISBA is having a reception for board members in our region down at Villa Borgesi in Wapageus Falls on Monday, June 24th. It's a 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. reception, so just so you're aware, it's there, it's no cost. It's a thank you all for serving. So just be aware of that.
I only have one other other. I'd like you guys to give thought to your committee assignments for next year, and once the vote has happened, I'll reach out to our new board members and have them consider the different committees that are available, and I'll get the horse trading going before the end of June. So if you can email me your preferences, that would be terrific. We'll get that moving. And Jo, we also need to talk about dates for evaluation.
Yes, that, that was the other.
That was the other.
And I just found my reminder, so, so what I was thinking is that in terms of a timeline, I should have, I should have everything ready to go by, I should have everything ready to go by the end of next week. I mean, everything uploaded that has to be uploaded. So, but I'll let you know when, and if I have it done sooner, I'll let you know sooner. And then that will give you guys two weeks to go in and do your, do your thing. I already sent them, just yesterday, I sent them their help desk an email to make sure we had all of the login passwords and whatnot. You know, you do it once a year, so it's not like you're, you're using that with any kind of frequency unless you have it written down. So as soon as they get back to me with that information, I'll pass it along to you. Maybe they'll email it directly to you, I'm not really sure. So that's, that's what I'm thinking. If, if you start on it by the end of, the end of next week or earlier, then we can discuss at the meeting on June 11th and either approve, approve it that night or at the second meeting in June.
All right, well, I think you're missing a step or two.
I may.
I think, based on our schedule from last year, you uploaded your self-evaluation, and then we all meet to discuss that.
Okay.
And so I think if everybody is willing, I think that needs to be our meeting on May 28th to review Jo's self-evaluation.
Yeah, I think that's, that's doable.
Okay, perfect. And then we, as a board, have some time to put together our own personal evaluations, and then we have in the past gotten together in the conference room and sort of talked to each other about what we were all thinking and why this, not that, and those kinds of things. My hope is that by June 25th, we have our final sign-off on your evaluation. And so on the 21st of June, I'll be able to get you the compiled final evaluation, which is before that weekend, so you have time to sift through it. But we're, we're running out of, we're running out of meetings, so I think the 11th, we, aye, 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 we have to, we have to have our review session and we have to have final edits pulled together. So if we get Jo the compiled evaluation on the 21st, which is a Friday, I think I would like to call for your final edits to me by the 17th, which is the Monday, if that's all right. And then we have to sneak in an executive session to review the compiled information. So it can be the week of the third, it can be the week of the 10th, because we have a meeting on the 11th. It's usually, we usually spend
Would you want to do that, like an early executive session on the 11th?
Well, I'm not sure we can do, I'm not sure we have enough time.
Okay.
So if you guys would get me dates for either the week of the 3rd or the 10th that you're available.
Is that for the roundtable?
Yes, for our, our discussion about everything that we've written in our own evaluations.
And what week is that?
We have to submit it, but
So if we, if we get Jo's self-evaluation on the 28th, it could be toward the end of the week on the, of the week of the 3rd or the beginning, you know, by the 12th perhaps. It's tight, it's really tight. We got, we're getting late starts, so, so if you guys would get me dates about when you might be available, so let's say 5th, 6th, 7th, or 10th, 12th, for that evaluation meeting.
12 is the end of the month.
It is?
And the 10th is the end of the month.
He likes. I don't have that. All right. So 5th, 6th, 7th.
It's cross out 10 and 12.
Cross out 10 and 12, okay, yeah. So I apologize, we're only going to have a little over a week to pull our thoughts together, but as long as Jo is uploading before Memorial Day. We can sit with our toes in the sand and write evaluations.
I'll make sure it's done by then.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah, that should be fine.
All right. Okay, perfect.
I'm unaware of the order of this would be, but I just was looking through the NFHS contract, and I noticed a couple of things. One, installation of services Um, and I noticed a couple of things. One, installation of services of the unit, responsibility of the school.
Yeah.
Here? Oh, okay. I thought they were doing the installation.
No, they, they come out and.
Give us.
Give us feedback as to where it should go. We physically install it. It's not.
And I didn't see anything in here, I read really quickly, but I didn't see anything in here about their providing, like, maintenance and support on a physical.
It's, it's in there someplace. I, I'll go through and look for it, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't see, in case something went wrong.
Running through it this afternoon.
I see, you know, they're providing services back in technology systems, but not saying, like, in case something goes wrong, that they would be.
There, there's a, what they call a. EULA, an end-user agreement. That's about seven or eight pages, and if it's not here, it's in the end-user agreement.
Okay, great. Just checking.
Mm-huh. Yeah, good, good idea.
Um, can I just ask a question? So, we talked about my participating in the evaluation process. So you're gonna want me to the meet, to be at the meetings as well?
Yes, please.
Okay.
If you're willing.
Of course. Absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that you wanted me to be there.
Yes.
I won't be on the board anymore.
That'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be great.
And, and Joe, I think you'll have to just make sure that my access to the, uh, the outlook, it continues until that's closed.
Yeah, so we had to make sure we don't cut her off.
Right, right. Once, once it's done, you could cut me.
We'll keep you on, we'll keep you on.
Just in case.
That's a good point, though.
Okay.
Michelle wouldn't take you off until we told her.
Okay.
Take her off, so.
Okay.
Knowing this, we obviously won't give her that directive.
Okay, that's fine. Maybe we won't get cut off until July ninth.
Anyway.
All right. Thank you, guys. Diane?
Uh, Joe, I think when we're sending you dates for the summer meetings.
Yeah.
We should also work on scheduling the board workshop meeting, probably at.
Sure.
At the same time.
Mm-huh. Well, you know what? Might be easier if you, if, if you just let me know when you're not available, then I, then I'll.
Yeah.
I'll work a bunch of dates. That's, that's probably the easiest, unless you're planning on being away all summer. Actually, that would be very easy, if you just said, "I'm gonna be away for both months." But just, just if you let me know what weeks you're gonna be away, then I'll, I'll use that as the jumping on point. Thank you. That's a good idea.
Okay. Any other other?
I don't.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to our action items. Uh, would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I would like to thank very much the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, the PTSO, and Michelle Entner, for the gift of the trombone. They, um, I, I didn't have a chance to look, but I really think that there has not been a single meeting this year that we haven't accepted an award from our ISE for PTSO or both, and we are incredibly grateful for their support.
And incredibly lucky.
And incredibly lucky, yeah. So, all those in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. Uh, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional non-unit salaries for managerial confidential employees for two thousand eighteen, nineteen? See attached.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the participation of Rhinebeck High School in the NFHS Network School Broadcast Program through the no-cost special pixel use agreement for a five-year duration effective with the start of the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute such agreement on behalf of the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussion of the employment criteria to put the person.
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We're moving into executive session. Thank you for being here.